This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Finance Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 14th. Thank you for being patient while we figure that all out. I'm still, I still have COVID, so I cannot be with you in person, but I wish I could be. So, let's see. Counselor Trill, I saw that you sent your meetings, your minutes in. I had a chance to review those. Counselor Denham, did you have a chance to review those minutes?
Yes, I reviewed them.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for, what was that? That had been January 31st?
Somewhere.
Those were the 31st minutes, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
No, 1:24.
24.
24, yes, alright, the 24th. Yes, 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 31st we didn't meet. Okay. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, alright, aye, okay. Super.
Point of order, sorry, we have to do roll call?
Oh, right, 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 because I'm remote. Okay. Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Trill?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passed, 3 to 0. I do not see the mayor there, so I assume there's no mayor's communication. Public speak, anybody from the public here to speak today about anything that's not on our agenda?
No.
Okay. Alright, well, let's just go into, just before we get into new business, I should just say, given that this is a little chaotic, I'm going to propose that we postpone talking about any of our continuing business until our next meeting, when hopefully everyone will be healthy and organized. But I do want to talk about CPA supplemental appropriation, so let's move to that. So this is a $100,000 appropriation. It's for pre-development activities related to the town lodging house and to support and create affordable housing. I was at the CPA meeting where this was approved. It's a very interesting project. If I'm not mistaken, it used to be pretty common that there were these farms in municipalities where people who were in poverty could go and work on the farm in lieu of paying rent, and there's sort of a boarding house type model. You know, you'd get a small room in a big house. And if I'm not mistaken, East Hampton's was the last in the country to actually be operating, but it closed down, if I'm not mistaken, in the 60s. And the property's been used in various respects ever since, but it is at this point in pretty bad shape and faces sort of a triple whammy of having an affordable housing preservation and agricultural preservation and historical, or sorry, agricultural restriction, affordable housing restriction, and historical preservation restriction on it, making it probably one of the most restricted properties in the world. And so, that was, this was a lot of that is, the idea of this project would be part of doing this in order to make it financially viable, would be to put an addition onto this house, but there has to be some archaeological work that's done on the premises prior to doing that due to the historical restriction. And I think there's a few other things that are being done in terms of pre-development around that same sort of scope of generally just handling the bureaucracy that comes with these restricted properties, so that we can go to getting the, starting to work on the actual work. Jamie, I'm sure I missed some things, but that's what I've got. Would you like to expand on that at all?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the great introduction. You did a really good job of putting it together. It's a complicated project. So, what we're trying to do here is to rehabilitate and preserve the town lodging house and restore its use for affordable housing. It has, as Tom mentioned, it has historic preservation restriction, an affordable housing restriction, and the land around it is under open space agricultural preservation. It was built in the 1890s. It's been supported on and off by the town, now city, for over 130 years. Most recently used for 23 units of affordable housing. We leased the property to the Southern Middlesex Opportunity Council. They vacated the building in 2022 because the condition of the building was not suitable for human habitation. We had a study done in early 2020 that showed it needed at the time about a million and a half dollars worth of improvements just to bring it up to sort of contemporary code, but not even to like improve the building or make it a place where people would really want to live. As I said, it's 23 units. There's single-room occupancy units, meaning it's shared bathroom, shared kitchen. And it's, you know, pretty, which right now it's in pretty sorry state. So what we're looking to do is, the $100,000 for this project was originally supposed to be a match to the underutilized property program run by the state. We were going to, we applied to the program to get funding for construction documents to rehab the building. We were going to match it with this $100,000. We were not awarded the grant. So we're now pivoting towards the Community Development Block Grant Program. That application is due in about six weeks. And that would be to, again, rehab, to get the design plans to rehab this building. Assuming we get the grant, we're hoping to work with Valley Community Development to, as we said, Tom, build a new building on the site. There's a minimum number of units, around 30, to make a project economically feasible for development purposes. And so the intent would be to rehab this building to studio apartments rather than single-room occupancy. So it would be adding a small kitchenette and bathroom into each of the units. There would still be shared common spaces available for residents, but they would not be required to have shared bathrooms or shared kitchen facilities. And then the new building would have 12 to 15, sorry, 15 to 18 units of one, two, and three-bedroom family-style apartment, studio apartment, family-style apartments. We are hoping to use the $100,000 from CPA to do the pre-development activities, the archaeological investigation, which you had mentioned, about $63,000. We have a quote from SWCA out of Hammers. They're an environmental and historic consulting firm. And what they would essentially do is dig 45 or so test pits around the site. They're looking for historical artifacts and anything related to the habitation of the site. Hopefully, we're not going to find anything that's a deal breaker for the project. For instance, if we find any burial plots, then we will have to not continue in that area. But assuming they don't find any signs of buried people there, then we'd be able to go ahead with the construction of the new building, pending a review by the Mass Historical Commission as well as the National Park Service. The historic restriction is one that put the building on the National Register of Historic Places as well as the State Register of Historic Places. The remaining of the $100,000, we're looking at about $25,000 to keep on hand for preservation activities of building to make sure that it doesn't continue to degrade in the next five years or so before we're actually able to begin construction of the building. And another $7,000 or so for legal expenses dealing with the boundary issue. Currently, the boundary of the building lot is an old tent that's no longer in existence. So we need some survey work and legal work with Mass Department of Agricultural Resources to make sure that they're okay with us dividing up the parcel. That's the rest of that. I'm happy to enter any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Counselor Trill?
I have a quick question. You had mentioned that we didn't qualify for that first grant, and that the second one is due in six weeks. What happens if we don't qualify for that one either? What happens at that point?
Well, we did qualify the grants. We didn't, we were not awarded the grant. If we're not awarded the Community Development Block Grant, then we'll probably apply again to Underutilized Property Program a few years out. The advice we got from the community is like, Underutilized Property Program is that the building isn't in bad enough shape, and that we are not a medium of community. So we're unlikely to do well in future rounds to an Underutilized Property Program. The Community Development Block Grant Program has different requirements for how they come their projects.
Counselor Denham?
So, let's say hypothetically, they find something on the property, like a burial ground, let's just say hypothetically, and we can't move forward with a new project, but there is the opportunity of continuing to work on the current building, on that space, yeah.
Correct. Valley Community Development has made clear that where they find, they need about 30 units to make a project economically feasible. The state won't really look at projects for affordable housing and tax credits and the voucher programs, that they don't make a certain number of units. They each have their minimum requirements. And so they would probably back out of the partnership if we were not able to go ahead with the new building.
Because that structure isn't big enough to do 30 rooms.
Correct. So it's currently 23 single-room occupancy units. A couple of them are really small, like the size of a faucet, like a mattress on a car. They're really, they're not great units there. So we'd be in a, we'd have to figure out what the next step would be. And I don't know if we would go forward with the project because we don't have the, able to get funding from the state to move forward that the city wouldn't have the $45 million to cut out to rehab this building and build a new one.
Yep, so if they, if they do find burial ground, or they don't find, let's say hypothetically, or actually if they do, what happens to that land? Does it just?
Well, so it's city property, and if there were, if it was used for burial purposes, then presumably we have to figure out how to move forward with that.
Right, so that's my question, yeah.
But we're not, I mean, the city, the state wouldn't want us to relocate graves, and we wouldn't want to do that either. So we'd probably have to put in some markers and designate and show, you know, try to find out who's buried there. But, you know, it's a low probability that that happens. We've done preliminary archaeological investigation that didn't turn up anything like that. The historical record doesn't show that people were buried there. There's been a lot of historical documentation over the years about this building and the site, so. You know, it's a small possibility, and it's one that we have to, you know, per Mass Historic. They, they won't let us go further, any further than this study. And then once we definitely know after digging these test pits, then we can move to the next stage.
Right, and I just have one more question. So if we, and again, let's go back and say hypothetically, there was something found, and we couldn't build a new building, and Valley CDC kind of pulls out, it's a historical building. So what happens? If we don't have the funds to do anything, it's a historical building, so it has to be, it can't be, I think, torn down, correct? So it would just sit, correct, until it basically fell down?
I mean, we'd have to figure out a way forward with the state and the, you know, something would have to give between the historical preservation restrictions or the existing affordable housing restrictions. But currently, the only path forward is to redevelop it in a historically appropriate manner with affordable housing. It's impossible that the state would look at that, the Mass Historic Commission could find a, well, maybe we can tweak the design if we know where the limits of that theoretical burial property are. Or maybe they, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources would allow us to tweak the boundaries of the agricultural land, so we can build, it's 56 acres of land, only 2 and 1/2 acres are the building lot.
Right, so. And, and let's say there was nothing found on there, and we didn't provide the funds for there, that building would just sit, basically?
Yeah, until something unfortunate happens.
Right, okay, thank you for that clarification. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, great. Anybody else present have any questions?
No, but Counselor Krasinski, I think you have.
Counselor Krasinski, by all means.
Thank you. I was waiting for the Finance Committee to finish up before we went to other counselors. Sounds like the property is severely restricted. How did those restrictions come into place? If they came into place, I would imagine to get money for rehabbing the building in 2000 or something?
So my understanding is the agricultural preservation restriction was added in somewhere around the late 1980s. There was a group called East Hampton Pride, and they stood for like, I don't actually know what their acronym is, did for, but there was a crisis point in the 80s after this stopping a, the town stopped providing as much funding for it. It was subject to annual appropriations that were always being questioned. And I think that a bunch of residents got together, formed this committee, and one of the things that came out of it was the agricultural preservation restriction in order to make sure that the land wouldn't be sold off, and, you know, that we'd have a bunch of subdivisions out there. The historic preservation restriction was granted by the city for part of the town, no, city, in 1998 or 1999 in exchange for funding from the Mass Historical Commission to completely redo the dislaid roof and some other building exterior renovations. And then the affordable housing restriction was put on in around 2000, beginning of 2000. It was, we used Community Development Block Grant funds at the time to rehab the building, mostly again focused on the exterior and some like weatherproofing windows and things like that. But it did not by and large touch the interior of the building, and it definitely did not do much to increase the livability of the building, or like the, how people, with the spaces that the people were living there with.
So it was to get money in many ways, that sounds right, to do some upgrades to the property. And those upgrades brought the property, maybe improved the property, okay? At that time, we had employees who, I think, worked for the city, who, just to bring you up to snuff on some of this, we had employees who worked for the city who ran the building and ran the site and managed the property. So this was not only a city-run site, but it was actually, there was employee, employee. And I guess the person recently left in the last five to 10 years, something like that.
My understanding is there was a caretaker of a building who lived on site and provided the, you know, care of residents, and that they were given a stipend by the city. But all that ended in, I don't know, 2002 or 2003, somewhere when SMOCK took over, we leased the building to them. They provided their staff to manage the building. They did the leasing with residents, and the city at that point only paid the water and sewer bills.
I thought SMOCK came in around 2010, but we may be right about 2010. My point was, it was city managed by the city. Then SMOCK came in, they took over the management and the bills and getting tenants and having tenants leave. This resulted, I think, in, and I think at the end, there were like 11 to 15 people who lived there. It wasn't like always 23, so a range between the 15 and the 23. In looking this over, I was, I took a tour through the property, and to me, it looked pretty good in terms of its bones, its structure, in terms of much of it. Now, again, there were things that weren't up to snuff and didn't look great, and it needed money to run, but it looked.
Was this a recent tour, sorry, a recent tour?
Within the last six months, yeah. So I'd call it relatively recent. Again, the report was a million and a half to bring it up to snuff in 2020. I'm sure it's gone up somewhat more and to bring it up to the code standards, which you'd have to do, I'm sure, to do any renovation, group lots of things. My point is, to have the property be used for affordable housing and for, at the level it had been to have it be an SRO, excuse it, it's been an SRO. The whole neighborhood around there developed with the understanding, this is the town lodging house. It's been here 130, 120 years. This is, this is part of the neighborhood. This is, this is what we have. The impact was, I think it probably had like three cars, maybe two. People didn't, a lot of people didn't drive cars, so it didn't have a huge impact. My concern is that in using, going down the path that we're going down to have 18 to 20 units be built in addition to renovating the property, it would, what's the, what's the impact going to be? You took, you know, an area where there was 15 to 23 people living in the building. Okay, that was the significant difference than the single-family homes that are across the street. But if you add 18 to 20 units out, they're not single SRO units. They're family housing, as I read.
It's one, two, and three bedrooms.
One, two, and three bedrooms. So I'm going to say it's averaging, or what, maybe four people per unit? For a mix like that, you said 20, 20 units, you're talking 80 people. And give or take. And then you add the 15 to 20, let's say 20, in the other building. Now you're talking almost 100 people impacting in one area. That's pretty intensive use, very different from the rest of the neighborhood. So I looked at it and was saying, it certainly makes sense to have, to restore the place, what it was. That's what it was. It should continue with that at the very minimum. The plan we're going down, I'm not sure, I'm not sure this moving forward with $100,000 commits us to that particular plan or not. I'd like to think that it doesn't commit us to that plan necessarily, that we could be thoughtful about it. If there was two-family or three-family, something in conjunction, that would make sense maybe. But 18 to 20 units changes kind of like the whole number. And then I guess it would be taken over by this other agency, Community Valley CDC, the building, and it will hold the whole, the whole 30 units. Is there another alternative? Are there other alternatives that make sense? It sounds like we'd need, we'd need somebody like SMOCK to run it if it were rehabbed. If we could somehow rehab it, find a fund, because we did it before, maybe we could do it again. Million and a half, two million, doesn't seem like, I think we might have an obligation to restore the property based on it being, also having signs of historic preservation restrictions. It would seem to me, my concern is that we don't commit ourselves down the road prematurely to something that we really haven't thought through and understand the impact of. We're now building, this old school, I think it was 60 units of affordable housing there. We just approved last, last week, 87 funds for 87 additional units and 96 additional units. That brings us to 243 new affordable housing units, which is something I think to be very proud of, and we're doing for our community and the folks who will enjoy living here. Maybe one of the projects that we're talking about funding, the people who are going to be doing the schools, might be interested in managing a 20-unit building of SRO. That may, may be something that we haven't thought of, because we haven't reached that point yet. Buildings aren't here. The schools haven't been renovated, because it's all jealous now. So I wanted to put that on the table before we spent any money on anything, just so folks could give pods to think about that as a possibility. I bring that up as Counselor's point for the district, and I understand that there have been, there's some concern among the neighbors about this, so that, I'll leave that on the table. In terms of the historic documents, I'd love to see some of the preservation documents, which I haven't seen. I'd request those, all of them. And has there been any communication with the Mass Historic Commission in order to get them to come up with those plans? I'd be interested in taking a look at some of those, some of that information. Just getting at what they're really looking at, they may, they may tell us some more information. It sounds like they're looking for historical artifacts, right, sorry, how will they be doing that? Ground penetrating radar, you're sort of.
They'll be taking test pits with a consultant, a historical consultant. They've submitted an archaeological dig. They have to submit to Mass Historic Commission what they're intending to do for their archaeological investigation. It has to get approved by the commission, it tells them restrictions, it tells them how they are to. Store, things that are removed, where that store, who gets to, all these, these are the city's heritage, so we'll just be like dug up and then for a long.
Just as a quick aside, are there any records on graves in the city that, I mean, there were a lot of people who lived at this site, and I'm sure when they passed away, they were impoverished. It wasn't like folks probably running over to say, I want to help bury this person in my family plot. So the city had to do something, and there's no like general knowledge that, oh, over in this section of Brookside Cemetery, that's where folks were buried. I wouldn't be surprised at all if somewhere on the property we would find graves. Based on.
That is why we're doing this investigation.
Which is great. We wouldn't want to disturb anything. To mark it up, and I like your plan of maybe cutting off, negotiating with the agricultural people, the ex-tray family, the store plan for, for the agricultural land. If that came to it, we needed some additional area that wasn't big enough. And I'd like to see something happen here. I think the city would like to see something happen here. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Alright, well, Jamie, do you want to respond to any of that? Beyond what you've said already?
I'm happy to send JP documentation that, the preservation restrictions, they're, I have them downloaded. They're a little bit hard to find, the mass line records, so I won't save you that trouble. There has been a lot of communication with Mass Historic. Um, there, there has been a lot of communication with Mass Historic about this project. Um, we, they are, you know, the, their preservation restriction, like I said, it's on the National Register of Historic Places. The new building would be designed to be historically, uh, to, to match historically, it's going to be, uh, designed to look like. We have some pictures of what some of the old barns looked like. It used to be an old house, it used to be an old ice house on the property. Um, there's some barns, other outhouses and things like that. So, um, it will reflect what was there historically. Um, it's not going to be an exact replica, obviously, of what was there. But, you know, this was up until the sixties, it was active on land. They had, uh, animals and tractors and all sorts of agricultural uses. More recently, the city has been leasing the land to, um, a farmer who has it.
This is on the Register of Historic Places. I wonder, the National Register, I wonder, there can't be very many in the country of buildings that still exist that were, take it back. This was one of the first ones, East Hampton. I think Massachusetts was a real, real forerunner. I think there were a couple in Massachusetts, uh, down the lodging house that preceded ours. But I don't know, I think they're the front now and they're probably not there. I can imagine someone might take an interest in, they'd love to see something, a place like this restored to its old condition. It really is a piece of history that, I don't know, we may have, one of, one of the few were, like, only ones left. So I, I, there may be an angle there that we could pursue that it helps to renovate on its own. Thank you for getting, for offering the deputy with information. I'd love to see those communications here in the traffic.
Thank you. I'll send you what I have.
Thank you.
All right. Well, from what I understand, just to throw this out, from, from the conversation we had during CPA and everything I've heard here, this particular, these funds are for pre-development work and we're not going to understand what our options are until we do it. So I, I'm personally not inclined to hold this process up, uh, while we figure that out. But I do hear what you're saying, JP, and we can continue that conversation. Uh, is there anybody else who wants to say anything before we move to a vote? Nobody?
I did have a question.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Uh, my name is Jean Paul Wilson. Had a question about, we talked about the boundaries, um, there used to be a fencing. And then you said now it will just be, you'll have different ways of dividing the land up. Is that like to be for the future use?
So there's, there's fifty-six acres and that's, those boundaries are. Okay. Within that fifty-six acres, there's a two, approximately two and a half acre piece of land that's, um, the building lot that has the, the house on it, had the old barn, um, has the driveways and the, um, it's, it's what people recognize as somebody by all of this street. Um, the, the, there was at one point in time a fence around that two and a half acre lot that sort of separated from the agricultural land. When the agricultural preservation restriction was created, it used that fence line as the boundaries between what was the preserved agricultural land and what was the buildable lot where the city had the ability to build things, make changes without disturbing, without violating the agricultural land. Subsumed that fence got removed because it probably fell down and we, we didn't find, there was no need to put it back up. Um, there were no animals on the, on the farm at that point in time, nothing to like, to close, so it was just left out. We had a rough idea of where that boundary is. We used, really using historical imagery as well as a, um, ground survey to try to get that as close as we can to, but there, there was no, that preservation restriction does not have any drawings or meeting bounds on the body coordinates of that two and a half acres. Or it doesn't even say two and a half acres. It just says a, a piece of land surrounded by a penthouse precise. So, um, so it takes some technical work to figure that out. And once we figure out what the, for good certainty, where we think it is, we need to get Mass Department of Agricultural Resources to sign off on it, that they also agree with us. They have their records that they're looking at, but we just want to make sure that going forward, it's surveyed and it's clear, so that way any development that happens doesn't go into the type of. That's great.
Okay. Uh, great. Is there anything else anyone would like to say? Any questions, comments for, uh, entertain motion, uh, Councilor Trell?
I just have one more quick thing. So, forgive yourself. Simplistically, this money is for pre-development and this, this isn't, we're not committing to anything. This is to determine what our options will be moving forward.
Exactly. I mean, we're, we're committed to taking the next step of preserving, trying to keep the building preserved as best we can until it can be redeveloped.
Let's see what our options are based on.
And to see if there's, yeah, to see if there's space within this two and a half acre to build a new building. If yes, then we'll go down that road with, you know, it'll be more, we'll need more money for that process. We'll need, um, you know, there'll be some transfer of ownership or, you know, agreements and things that'll resolve. Um, the mayor's office and the public city council, um, there'll be other opportunities besides this one.
All of which will be determined based on what we find out.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I just want to say something quick, Jerry. Yeah, so I'm, I'm not committed to any decisions moving forward. Um, I, I do think this is a necessity. We need to figure out what's in that particular space. And at the same time, if we don't do anything, then this building is just going to continue to deteriorate. And that's not going to be of any advantage to the community as is, or that particular neighborhood, right? So, um, you know, I'm just inclined to be able to like, find out what do we need to know in order to move forward with some decision, right? So I just want to make, make that why I'm going to be supportive of this, you know, no, because I don't think that's fair to the neighborhood either, just to allow this to continue to deteriorate.
Yeah, uh, that I think is a pretty good, uh, representation of how I feel about it too. I, I do just want to say, and I'll say this probably the town meetings well, or sorry, in the, the, uh, the public hearing as well. Uh, I, I do think that to some extent, when we're looking at this, we, we should be just taking, you know, some what did we learn type, uh, questions away from it. Because there have been times in my time on the council where, um, we have accepted funds to do this or that on various properties. Uh, the library comes to mind, uh, with preservation restrictions attached to them. And this, to me, seems like an example of something where, um, doing what we need to do here is going to be, uh, quite a bit more expensive than it probably needs to be because the people of the past, meaning completely well, um, you know, just set things up in this way that it meant that there's the, the, just a huge amount of work that needs to be done to adapt the use of this building, whatever that adapt, adaptation looks like. And so just, uh, you know, when we are thinking about our, our current stock of buildings and properties and whatnot, um, and things come up like this where that accept these sorts of restrictions on their use, I do just think that it's something that we should be mindful of, that this is kind of like, this is the risk that you run when you do those sorts of things is that it creates a situation where we're going to pay somebody five figures to dig a bunch of holes in the ground. But, you know, I mean, I, it's what we have to do. I'm not deriding that. I'm just saying like, you know, the, there's, there are, there are costs that come with these things sometimes. So I, I, I just hope that we can, we can keep that in mind, uh, as we move forward. But this has been, I'm, I'm excited to see this move forward, I have to say, because it's just been a super interesting, uh, sort of history lesson about this particular property and all of the various things that have gone on on it. So, um, unless there's anything else, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, recommend that, uh, to recommend to the full council the appro, the appropriation of this one hundred thousand dollars for pre-development work.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion of second. Uh, Councilor Denham.
Aye.
Councilor Trell.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes three to zero. Uh, thanks, everybody. We haven't, oh, oh, yes, Jamie.
Um, this, next week I will be on vacation, um, when it goes to City Council, I'm going to jet this, also, it's, it's the following. It's not the twenty-third, maybe the thirtieth.
I thought it was the.
Twenty-nine.
The Colton.
Next week.
Like, this is an off week.
I think I remember setting the public hearing for this coming Wednesday. Am I wrong?
Yeah, this, this coming Wednesday is my recollection.
Yeah.
Well, we've talked about, Jamie, I think I can, I think I can handle that. If you would like to prepare just like a quick memo with any essential facts that you want me to read, uh, on your behalf, that would be fine. But we've discussed this a good deal at this point. I think I can handle it if you're on vacation.
Okay. I'll, I'll type something up for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, like I said, well, we've got it, there's another meeting, uh, in ten minutes, so I don't want to hold, uh, folks up. So, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and we can talk about, uh, the rest of this stuff, uh, in two weeks.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion of second. Uh, Councilor Denham.
Aye.
Councilor Trell.
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, motion's adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Uh, have a great evening. I'll see you soon.